Heavenly Father, we give you thanks this evening for the blessing it is to serve our neighbors. And Lord, we ask that your Holy Spirit would guide and direct our actions and grant us wisdom and discernment as we seek to steward public resources. Give you thanks and entrust ourselves to your leading, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and with that, we'll call the business meeting to order, beginning with the roll call. Christie?
Brodigum.
Present.
Chapman.
Present.
Felton.
Here.
Funk.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Pike.
Present.
Renssberger.
Present.
Thank you, and having established a quorum for the conducting of city business, we'll move along to our first item on the agenda and open a public hearing regarding ordinance 16C-25, which is an additional appropriation of funds in the wheel tax fund. Any members of the public here to address City Council on the matter this evening? Seeing or hearing any members of the public to address council regarding the additional appropriation, we will close the public hearing and move along to minutes of the previous meeting from August 26th. Is there a motion to bring the minutes to the floor for consideration and adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion and consideration of the minutes? Seeing or hearing any, we'll call the question in favor of adoption. Christie?
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodigum.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Thank you, and moving along to reports from committees, boards, or commissions. Charlie?
This morning at dispatch, we received an update on changing our 911 provider from AT&amp;T to Indigital, and that's progressing very well. Indigital has a lot of experience. They handle dispatch in Indianapolis and Fort Wayne, so, and they have offices in Fort Wayne, so we're confident they can be responsive. And the move to fiber is in its final stages. We also reviewed a change from our current phone system, which is being phased out, and Indigital representative reviewed the new system through the board and talked about how the changeover would work. We reviewed annual costs for the new system, which are expected to be roughly about what we're paying now, maybe a little less, but we'll see how that goes. But it was a good meeting, that's all I have.
Thank you, Charlie. Paul?
Nothing here.
Dwight?
Nothing at this time.
PJ?
Nothing here.
Todd?
Nothing here.
Andrew?
Nothing.
David? Moving along on the agenda, petitions or comments from citizens this evening?
Nothing, thank you.
And not aware of any old business, we'll move along to new business. First item under new business is first reading of ordinance 16C-25. Christie?
Ordinance 16C-25, this ordinance of adopted would provide additional funding to the wheel tax fund, improvements other than buildings, line item 2250001441, for $142,000.
Is there a motion to bring this to the floor for consideration and adoption?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and second. With us tonight, I've got Superintendent Bischof to share information on the purpose of the appropriation for council members' benefit. Council, of course, welcome to ask any questions they have regarding it.
Good evening. This additional is to do a widening project on Ash Street. Many of you have seen it, drove it. Complaints from residents, obviously, it's a short-term fix. The plan is to widen it roughly two to three feet, the east side, all the way from the entrance to Indian Ridge to Grant. Earlier last month, I got proposals from three construction companies. Works is the lowest quote, and with the additional, we would like to move forward and get this project taken care of yet this year.
Is this the area around the curve where the guardrail is?
Just past the curve. So, you know, Indian Ridge?
Yes.
Starting there, going all the way up to Greens.
Oh, you're going that way?
Oh, north, yes.
Okay. The curve is way worse.
That's another discussion for later, but yes. As I said, and it's in our five-year plan, you know, basically like Cottage Park and Jessup, curbs, sidewalks, stormwater, you know, no drainage out there, and that's the biggest issue with it. It has no place for it to go.
Are there questions by council members?
So, the wheel tax, is this taking money from the general fund to this, to do it, or is this adding taxes?
This is appropriating from the wheel tax fund.
The fund is already there, we're not raising anybody's taxes.
Correct. Yep, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Councilman Johnson, because it was just related to me that our agenda made the Fort Wayne news. I think because of that misunderstanding, we are not adopting a city wheel tax this evening as part of this. This is from an existing county wheel tax that's been in place a number of years. The funds that are distributed to the city, based on an established formula, we accumulate those funds and we use them for roadway projects such as this.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify that for everyone.
Tim, how long do you plan on making the permanent fixtures in place?
I'm working with Adam, it's in our five-year plan.
Okay, so you don't have a...
Don't have a set date.
Set date.
Now, it's going to require engineering, a lot of utility, a large project.
Further question or discussion? Okay, not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question on first reading of ordinance 16C-25. Christie?
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodigum.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Thank you, and then, Tim, do we need to request suspension of the rules on this to proceed?
Good, that would definitely keep this moving forward.
Okay, council members, is there appetite to allow for suspension of the rules this evening?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second on suspension of the rules?
Second.
Have a motion and second, further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules and allow for second and final reading of 16C-25. Seeing or hearing any at this time, we'll call the question on suspension of the rules. Christie?
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodigum.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Thank you, and then, is there a motion to allow for second and final reading of ordinance 16C-25 to allow us to proceed with this work?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion and consideration of the additional appropriation. Seeing or hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor on second and final reading of ordinance 16C-25. Christie?
Johnson.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodigum.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Next item on the agenda is first reading of ordinance 20C-25. Christie?
Ordinance 20C-25, this ordinance of adopted would amend ordinance 9C-24, an ordinance establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area called DORA by adding and removing certain entities from the list of designated permities.
Is there a motion to bring 20C-25 to the floor for consideration and approval on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second, and ask, person I would ask isn't here, so, we have two downtown businesses that would like to participate in the DORA. One is to amend a name and operations, and the other is to begin participating in it, and both of those businesses are represented here this evening. I'd like to invite them to step forward at this time and just state the name of the business that you're representing and your interest in participating in the DORA. Just be careful with that microphone, just lean right into it.
Art Easterday.
Erin Keel, and I own Legend Sports Bar.
And Legends is already participating in the DORA. Blue Collar would be added into it, and that's what we're looking at this evening. So, council members, I don't know if you have any questions for either of the representatives or just as far as how DORA's been going this year in general?
So, did you witness how it worked the first time, so you want to join too? Is that what happened, or you weren't invited the first time? What made you want to join the...
I did have a couple people who represent my establishment when the first meetings were taking place. We gave information on how to contact us, and we were left out of loop for whatever reason. We never got in contact, so we were one of the first ones to be interested in it, for whatever reason.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions or discussion? Okay, thank you both for your interest in it, and we'll call the question then in favor of approval on the amendment to ordinance 20C, with 20C-25. Christie?
Pike.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodigum.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, and then, councils, so they can begin proceedings with ATC, would there be appetite for suspension of the rules to allow for second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion and consideration on the motion to suspend Seeing or hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of suspension of the rules. Christie?
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodigum.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Motion carries, is there a motion for second and final reading of ordinance 20C-25 to amend 9C-24?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion and consideration. Not seeing or hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of the motion on second and final reading to adopt ordinance 20C-25. Christie?
Brodigum.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Thank you, and with that, it carries. Welcome to the DORA. All right, council members, next item on the agenda is presentation of the 2026 budget by department heads and representatives of departments. Few items to note in the overall presentation, the 100 series of the budget portion will be primarily addressed by Director Carroll when she gets up for her turn. The other department heads will handle the 200 through 400 series for each department. The only minor difference there would be regarding aviation. Of course, as always, questions and concerns by council members are welcome during this, and whatever information isn't already available in addressing those questions, it'll be sought out and brought. Contrary to some of the other communities around us, next year will be the year that we address the potential impacts of SEA-1, given the uncertainty of whether or not that will be the final product we're dealing with, or if there will be revisions from the State House this year. We've chosen to bring that forward in next year's budget cycle. So, while we're conscientious of it and looking ahead and planning for it and thinking through it, we're not approaching those measures with this year's upcoming budget. So, with that, I want to invite Mr. Dan Leonard on behalf of the Aviation Board to come forward and present on behalf of their department's budget.
You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Dan Leonard and I am on the Board of Aviation Commissioners for your airport, and I think there have been distributed copies of the proposed budget for next year. We've tried very diligently to keep expenses down. We're asking for what amounts to about a 2.5% increase in the budget, an increase of I don't want to go through particularly every line item in here, but you'll see that there have been some changes, and we've moved some revenue from one line item to a different line item to offset some of the expenses and keep the request to a minimum. Your airport's doing very well, I might add. For those of you who have gone past recently, you'll see two DC-3s sitting on the ramp. Those have a 95-foot wingspan, to give you some idea of the size of them. We have a gentleman at the airport who is bringing from Florida, 20, it's either, don't quote me on this, it's either 27 or 29, I've forgotten the total amount, airplanes from Florida to Huntington. So, we'll have quite an increase in the amount of aviation traffic here. Hopefully, we'll increase the amount of fuel sales, and we're looking forward to that. Scott Nicola, who runs our FBO, has been in the hospital recently and is home recovering, doing very well. Looking forward to him getting back to full strength. He runs the Ag Air at the airport, and also Patriot Aviation and does charter work. He has two Cessna 310s and also has just purchased a King Air that will be coming to Huntington very shortly. This year, we've had what I think is a very successful year. Many of you may remember that a couple years ago, we had problems with our fuel farm leaking, and we had to move it, and we were unable to get federal help to move that fuel farm. But then, we found out that we could apply after the fact for funding, and through the Aviation Improvement Project Fund, we have been granted reimbursement for the investment in that fuel farm. It's taking several years. It will take '25, '26, and '27 AIP money to get that done, but the FAA has approved that, and we will be getting that money. It amounts to somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000. We have a grant that's been approved through bill money, it's a bilateral infrastructure legislation that was passed through the federal government, and it is for our reels and pappies. Those are the, the reels are the lights at the end of the runway, and the pappies are lights that indicate to pilots whether they're too high or too low on approach coming in or landings. That grant was $317,000, and we will be receiving that. I think, I talked to Christie about it a little bit, I signed the paperwork on it, and that will be coming yet this fall, and we'll be getting that project in line for the airport. I'm excited about what's going on at the airport, I hope you will be too. We're asking for, I think, a very minimal increase in our budget of $10,096. Be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
So, those 27 planes, is he storing them there?
I'm sorry?
Those 27 planes he's bringing, is he storing them at our airport?
He has built a sizable hangar in the airpark that adjoins the airport. We have an agreement with an airpark for them to taxi through the fence to the, and he will house some of them in that new hangar that he's built. A big portion of them will be housed on the property, on the main property of the airport. So, it's a combination of storage, yes. When you're talking about putting fuel in a DC-3, I have a small airplane, my fuel bill this month was $93. I flew about four times this month, and I heard him say that one fill was $900 in some dollars. It is a significant amount of foreseeable increase in fuel sales. We're happy to have him bring those planes.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions for the Aviation Board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Next up is Chief Johnson with the Fire Department.
Good evening. I know you guys have seen my face up here a lot, asking for funds this year, so I'm going to try to have minimal increases this year. Few things I need to work on increasing is my overtime. This is just to maintain our minimum staffing. A lot of this has to do when we're sending firefighters to academy, increasing that about $5,000. Instruction, actually, we're going to decrease that about $5,000. We're going to do a little bit more in-house training scheduled for next year, which keeps our costs down, not having to send firefighters outside to different areas and pay for training there, so that's going to kind of even those things out. Another fuel increase, just increasing it a little bit, just trying to keep up with the cost of fuels, trying to make sure that we don't go in the hole there. Fire equipment, did increase that, $5,000. Fortunately, with all the fire department equipment, pretty much has a 10-year lifespan, and our rope rescue equipment is hitting that 10-year lifespan next year, so it's out of service after 10 years, so we're replacing a lot of our rope rescue and confinement, confined space rescue equipment, so up that $5,000. 300s, really nothing changed there, and then, the only thing we have in the capital is motor equipment, $97,060, and that reflects our lease payment for our 2024 rescue engine, and that's the lease payment number two of five. Other than that, I don't have any more to add, really, this year.
Questions for Chief Johnson?
So, 111, the $93,000 is just overtime, or, so that when they go to the academy, they're also paid, correct?
I'm sorry, what line was that?
111.
That's just wages and salaries. That's our base salary, along with longevity and everything, it was 111. The overtime's actually 119.
$119,000, where's that at?
No, line item 119.
Okay, so, is that the employee increase for this year? Is that what they're asking for, or something?
No.
Is that why it's $93,000 more?
3%. A 3% increase.
So, that's going to be...
Or costing overall across...
Probably all the departments, okay.
Yeah, and Annette's going to talk about that later.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
And that's going to...
It's kind of a big number, so I was just asking. Okay, thank you.
Chief, looking down at 443, that line item seems to jump up and down quite a bit.
Last year, that $26,000 was for SCBA mask. We bought 12 SCBA masks and regulators, and those run about $4,000 to $5,000 apiece. We've caught up with our rotation of catching up with replacing outdated ones, so I didn't need to replace any of this year, so that's kind of why that jumps up and down. It's whatever equipment that we have that we need to get updated that year, so that's why it's usually just for a specific item.
Further questions for Chief Johnson? Not hearing it this time, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up is Director Cuttriss to present on behalf of the Engineering Department City Hall budget, as well as landfill operations.
I'll start with the Engineering Department. I know Annette's going to talk about most of the 100 series lines, but I do need to touch on 113, the part-time line. That part-time line includes two things. In this year's budget, in the past, it's just been a part-time employee in my office to assist with engineering stuff. Most of the time, it's an intern of some kind. What we anticipate this next year is, one, an intern for a portion of the year, but also a part-time, basically a summer help position to assist with, to assist the city forester as she begins her tree plantings and maintaining those trees with the anticipation of planting about 500 trees each cycle, so it'll be about 500 this fall and another 500 in the spring. She's got to maintain those. That money, the breakdown in there would be about $3,000 for a part-time employee in the Engineering Department, and then $14,000 for a summer help position, we're looking at about six months of the year. That $14,000 would be reimbursable through the Arborist Grant that we have, so that's very similar to the Urban Canopy Specialist Line, that it's all reimbursable. Once we pay the salaries of that individual, I submit that for reimbursement through our grant. So, that's the only big item in the 100s that I need to touch on. The 200s, you'll see no changes there from last year, and all of the 300s are staying as well, outside of vehicle insurance, and no changes again in the 400s, so very minimal changes in the engineering budget this year. So, any questions on engineering?
Yeah, so, the reimbursement has to be after they're paid?
Right, we have to pay them first and prove that we've paid them, submit all the paperwork, then we get reimbursed. That grant is on a, when, the way that grant was set up is on a three-month, or, yeah, three-month cycle. After three months, I can submit for reimbursement, so it's a quarterly reimbursement.
Okay, then when we get reimbursed, where's it go to? General fund?
Yes, back into the general fund where it's being paid out of. If that's it on engineering, I'll move on to City Hall. Again, not a lot of changes, actually, this is a net decrease overall. It's a $9,000 decrease on the City Hall budget. No change in the 200 series, down in the 300 series. We've got a decrease in building and structural repair, obviously, as we're starting to look at a building remodel. Don't anticipate needing to spend a lot of money on building repair, so there's obviously a small amount in there for anything that's outside of the scope of that project, but, and then, equipment repair, again, there's a small amount remaining in there, mainly because we have monthly inspections that we have done on the elevator and that kind of thing, so in order to keep those bills paid, we left a little bit in there. The big changes are under 421 and 451. If you look, it's actually a wash between the two. It's mainly in a shift of $10,000 out of the building and fixed equipment into the furniture and equipment line. That's intended for purchasing of some common area furniture after the remodel's done next year, or furniture of this building. Again, City Hall budget overall, net decrease of $9,000, so, if there's any questions there? With no questions there, I'll move on to the landfill. The only change in the 100 series I need to touch on in landfill is a decrease in the part-time line. We've been slowly decreasing that over the time. We've got a little bit in there if we need a part-time employee, for instance, a summer helper or something like that. But, and then, down to gasoline, again, as we've been working through the landfill closure, we've been slowly decreasing that down close to where we are actually operating, based on our fuel expenses for our landfill equipment. We're looking at another, decreasing that another $3,000 down to 12 grand. And then, if we move down to the 300 series, decreasing the attorney line again a little bit, as we've closing out paperwork and everything, we haven't been needing attorney fees, so been whittling that down over the year, cutting that down $500. Special taxes, that relates to drainage fees, regulated drain fees that we still have to pay. We've just been getting that close to where we expect it to be. And then, electric, we actually decreased that one a little bit, but we did have to increase propane, the gas line 352, our propane, that's how we heat the building out there. Our propane expenses have been going up as propane prices have, so, small increase there. Otherwise, that's it out there. We're looking at a total of $1,205 increases out for the budget this year, so, any questions on that one? All right, thank you.
Next up, we'll welcome Superintendent Bischof back to present on the street, City Garage, MVH restricted.
All right, good evening. Nothing going on here in the 200s. Had some small increases in the 300s, mainly it was computer line, radio. We are getting some new trucks in, and they...
We are getting some new trucks in, and they will need radios. Radios cost roughly $700 apiece to have installed. I have to have three of those done. So that's why there is that small increase there in the radio computer line. There's a decrease in street trees since the arborists now, they have been able to do more trees than what the street department has. Had small line items just years past for residents who want trees. Been able to accommodate them. So we're keeping this in here just as a minimum, just in case there's some trees that are outside of the canopy area that the forester won't be able to do. Next decrease is in the 441s. The 210,000, that is just our lease loan payments on our new trucks and equipment. Actually, next year will be the fifth and final payment for one of the loans, and we will just be starting our new cycle with coming in here, year first quarter. Questions? Okay, moving on to garage. Just about as boring. We did increase the telephone line, $100. The laptop has a network card in it and offset the internet with that, and that comes through Verizon on our phone bill. Electric, we're saving some money there, also with gas. Got into a good place with those, so that's a small savings there. Larger idea of purchase in the 442s, $30,000 is for a heavy-duty tire changer. Right now, we're doing all of our dump truck rims and tires by hand, and a few of us are up in years. So it would be nice to actually have a tire changer that's made to do larger tires.
Is the tire changer more of a convenience? Or would it be, have you checked out if it'd be cheaper to run it through a business that does that, or is it just way easier to do it yourself?
It's a lot easier to do it ourselves. Middle of the night, you know, if we need to change a tire, you got to have it. And, you know, another thing, it's just safety, you know, anymore. It's rough, you know, breaking one of those down by hand. MVH. Slight decrease in office supplies in the 200s. Also 400s, 442. Last year, we purchased a brine maker and brine applicator, a larger one. Why it was more last year, and we're back to just a normal kind of an emergency if we need it. Charlie called it a slush fund. Really what it's there, it's there, you know, if we need it.
You can make slushies with it, right?
It'd be good. Big machine.
Big slushies.
Any questions for MVH? All right, finally, restricted MVH. The only thing we have there, sign and paint 242, $500 increase. It's just sign-making supplies that go up, unfortunately. All I have.
Further questions for Tim? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ring up Director Carroll to present on behalf of the Mayor's Office, Legal Department, City Council, Waits and Measures, Board of Public Works and Safety, as well as Human Resources.
So, good evening. You're going to have to bear with me. I've lost my voice, so I will focus and talk into the mic so you guys can understand me. So I'm going to start off with the Mayor's Office, and I should probably start off every time just to talk a little bit about what raises are going to look like and what the health insurance is going to look like and everything, because those are the main focuses in the 100 series. So, but what's being presented tonight to council is a 3% pay raise to all city employees. The city did bring on Baker Tilly, and they did do a rate study for all of our hourly positions. Councilman Brodegum and I sat down and did a review of what their findings were. They did comparable cities, as well as they also had to dive into a little bit of the public sector, just because some of the comparables to other municipalities weren't there to give us a good study that was done. And so Councilman Brodegum might want to chime in a little bit, but the salaries that are being paid to our hourly employees are very comparable to other municipalities and private industries as well. They are anywhere from 81% to 95% between the maximum range of what those studies that they found. So Dwight, I don't know if you have, want to chime in on that at all?
Yeah, the comparables were somewhat difficult because different places use different job titles. So sometimes you weren't sure if you were comparing apples and apples or apples and pineapples or oranges or whatever. And then some, there's some, sometimes there were only like three or four municipalities, and if you had one that was paying a lot more, which happened with someplace, some, near West Lafayette somewhere, I think it was. There were a couple of them like, whoa, they pay a lot there. And then on the other side, there were places that pay a lot less than we do. So it depended on which job you were looking at and which thing. But yeah, we're doing very well. In fact, there were some categories where we were over 100%, I think.
Yeah, so depending on, so they did a mid-mod maximum. And so depending on where we fell within the line, typically, the mid and the mod were anywhere from 80 to 120% within what comparable to other municipalities. But on the maximum side, we were anywhere from the 81, 85 up to 95% within that range. So the raises that council have been given over the last eight years, fortunately, have put the city back into a competitive race of retaining and recruiting new employees. So, and I'm going to touch on that as far as retention goes, just to kind of give you guys an idea of where we're at compared to where we have been as well. So, but I'm going to start, let me backtrack, and we'll start with the Mayor's. But as you'll see across the board, 100, a 3% pay raise is basically what the difference would be in the Mayor's budget, along with the city building is getting renovated. And so moving into new offices, we are putting some money in there to purchase new office equipment as needed. And the plan is to purchase it over the years and not just buy it all at one time. So, and then utilize whatever we may have available on hand. Any questions on the Mayor's budget?
No, but I would like a memo or a personal call to all the city employees to let them know how good their pay is compared to other people because of the, because this is only 3%. We've been giving a lot more than that recently. So just so they know, we're competitive now, you know what I'm saying? Because if they, oh, we're only getting 3%, we've been getting 5, 6, 7.
I would just note that the conversations I've had with city personnel, they're all very keenly aware of that and very appreciative of the support they've had from City Council.
Thank you, I just didn't want to catch heck for only being 3.
I do not think you'll catch heck from the majority of the city's workforce.
I don't speak for everybody, but I speak for myself, and I'm greatly appreciative. So thank you very much. So any questions on the Mayor's budget?
On 392, subscription and dues?
Yes, so.
Are, what kind of subscriptions?
So dues, the Mayor's, like for AIM and the Mayor's Northeast Indiana, Mayor's Commissioners, those types of subs and dues are what those are for. And they're not inexpensive.
They're not going down?
They are not.
Okay, thank you.
Not magazine subscriptions.
Yeah, no.
Just checking.
They give those away anymore, so, you know. So then we'll move on to the law budget. And the increase is in the salary. And then the 400, the 313 attorney, that fee went up to $175 an hour. So they get a salary, and then anything outside of that agreement that we have with Hartburg's office, it's $175 an hour. And then moving on to City Council. You've already graciously not given yourself a raise for next year, so there is no increase in your budget. However, if you would like that to change, talk to Christie, she'll see what she can do to change those numbers. And so then the next one is inspector or Waits and Measures. That is basically just the increase in the salary of the 3%. So then Board of Works. The, so we, the janitor position, part of his salary is paid out of the Board of Works budget. And so there's that increase in that part of his salary in that line item, as well as the employer 457 match. So anytime you get an increase, employees typically up their contribution to their retirement plan, and then the city matches part of that. So there's that increase for that line item as well. And then I'll bring her up here in just a few minutes, but Katie Hudson with the Humane Shelter is here to talk about the request for the additional, for their budget. The the 341, the insurance line item, so that is where we pay for deductibles if we have an auto accident or if miscellaneous fees come through, attorney fees, different various items that we pay for. We also pay for like municipal building vehicles, equipment outside of your regular department. So those monies come out of that. And so that line item across the board went up 7%. And so that's part of what that increase includes of that. And then I'll jump down to the computer line item, the 397. So what all is included in that line item, because you can see it's an increase? So that is all of the city's computer software. So we work with the county, they maintain all of our IT services. And so it pays half their salaries, it pays all of the computer software programs that the city has. And so they send us a bill, we reimburse them twice a year for that. So that's why that increased software program, it's gone up, as well as their salaries are proposed to go up 3% as well for next year. If you don't have any questions on any of that, I'll go ahead and ask Katie Hudson to come up and address the Humane Shelter.
So that, the 397 is our agreement with the county?
It includes all of that, yes. So the software, the salary.
And then our software, we pay for that on top of that, but...
Yeah, for some of the departments, yes. But the majority of all of them are paid out of that line item. But there are some special software programs, like that communications coordinator has. So it was paid out of it last year, but they've changed how they're doing it. So then for next year, it got moved out of that line item, and it's now going to be into the computer HR, that line item. So you'll see that increase.
So the increase is coming from a lot of directions, then?
Yes. Salaries, increase in software programs, adding programs, phone system.
For now, I'll have more questions later.
That's fine. Go ahead and come on up.
All right, good evening. I will try to keep this brief, but we'll start by talking a little bit about what we've been up to at the Humane Society so far this year. So on that first piece of paper, you will see our year-to-date information there. You'll see that so far this year, we have taken in just shy of 1,300 animals from the community, which is up about 10% from this time of year last year. As far as animal control calls go, we've responded to 523 calls, of which 325 of those have come from Huntington City Limits. You can see the breakdown there of kind of the categories and the classifications of where our time is being spent in animal control calls. Most of those are coming in in the form of animals that are at large or confined strays. But you will also see there's a pretty significant amount of sick and injured animals, as well as requests for welfare checks. So folks that may not be treating their animals to the best of their abilities and have concerned family, friends, or neighbors calling on their behalf to request our assistance in evaluating their animals and the condition in which they're living. Our monthly average animals in our care is about 102 cats and 43 dogs in the building at any given time. And if you've been in our building, that is certainly putting us at a critical position most throughout the year. And so we do have some plans for 2026 to help us to expand our capacity and services just to make the existing amount of population in our care more comfortable, not to increase the total amount of animals coming into our care, because this is truly at our maximum capacity that we have for our full-time employees that we have in, under our employment. So as far as community retention efforts go, we have put in place several programs over the last couple of years to help people keep their pets happy and healthy in their homes, and thus eliminating the need to come into our care in the first place. The one that we are very proud of and are very much seen as a community leader on is our Prevent a Litter Program, that PAL program, which is a spay and neuter program designed to spay and neuter cats in our community. Just a brief side note that since that program's inception, that you all adopted a couple of years ago, two and a half years ago, we have fixed nearly 1,000 cats just from Huntington City Limits. And so that is thousands of cats that are being prevented from coming into our care from the endless overpopulation. So again, I can't begin to express our gratitude for that because that has saved us immensely on program expenses and personnel expenses by preventing those cats from coming into our care. And so far this year, we have fixed just shy of 600 cats through that program. We are also a centralized hub for the United with Love Pet Food Pantry, and we also provide pet food to the Warren Food Pantry. We're hoping to expand into Andrews next year, but we have Humane Fort Wayne coming into Roanoke, so we are covering our municipalities as well in providing them with pet food. So again, people that are struggling to maintain care of their animals have the resources that they need in a close proximity to the area in which they live so that they are able to retain their pets at all cost. And we have distributed nearly 20,000 pounds of pet food through our connections with Amazon, Walmart, and Community Harvest up in Fort Wayne. And we've also been running low-cost vaccination clinics for folks that aren't able to get their pets seen by a regular veterinarian due to cost. We've ran two clinics so far this year, and we've seen 260 pets receive vaccinations. And we have one more clinic before the end of the year. So we're hoping to, in the year, around 400 pets that have received vaccinations and microchips through that, those clinic services. So that leads us into why we're asking for an increase in our 2026 city contract. Of course, we are continuing to experience higher intakes and animal control calls. Majority of those continue to be city-based services. And then, as you will see on the second page, that requires a significant portion of staffing to help us to maintain those levels of service and 24-hour-a-day services. And also, our program expenses continue to rise too as our own veterinary expenses continue to increase year over year. So with that, last year, we asked for $180,000 in our city contract. This year, we are asking for $207,000 in that city contract. We also asked for an additional appropriation for the PAL program of $40,000 last year. We are looking to reduce that just slightly by $36,000 this upcoming year. I do anticipate we will not use all $40,000 that has been set aside for that program before the end of this year. So I think we would be safe to reduce that just slightly for So I think we would be safe to reduce that just slightly for upcoming years. And then you will see that our biggest expenses continue to be payroll. We have an average staff of 10 full-time and two part-time individuals. From a pay-competition standpoint, we are competitive when it comes to roles like animal care specialists, so people that are taking care of the cats and the dogs. Where we are significantly shorter than others around us is when it comes to animal control. We are paying our animal control officers between $16 and $17 an hour, and they receive no, no benefits. Fort Wayne Animal Care and Control, just 20, 20 minutes north of us, starts their animal control officers at $30 an hour, and they receive city benefits. So we are significantly short in that regard. We have tried to offset that expense and that gap in offering those animal control officers a minimum of two-hour pay after hours. So that to help alleviate those 15-minute phone calls that wake them up in the middle of the night. They get guaranteed two hours of pay. We are also introducing a stipend for their medical expenses. Being a nonprofit, we're not able to afford to offer medical insurance to our employees, but what we are looking to do is offer a stipend to help them purchase medical insurance outside of our facility. And we're offering them educational reimbursement assistance. So if they want to advance their career and take the next step to other organizations or organizations outside of animal welfare, we want to support them in that regard too. And we are finding that to be a nice attractant to our organization for employment. With that being said, do you have any initial questions for me on what we're doing and the cost in which we're providing those services?
Yes, so the pet food giveaway.
Yeah.
Is that donated food that you implement to give away? Or are you buying the food to give it away?
A little bit of both. So when it comes to the Walmart distribution and the Amazon distribution, those are all donated. Community Harvest Food Bank offers it to us at a significantly steeper per pound rate. So it's about nine cents a pound.
And how are, I'll take this wrong. How is it checked? How do you check the people that are getting the free food to make sure they actually need it? Or they've just worked the system to get free food for their pets?
We rely on our distribution partners to verify their screening. So the same way that someone that is applying for human food through United With Love, they would do the same thing for their pets. So most of the distribution is not through us. We rely on those that already have the systems in process and the storage in process. Our shelter doesn't have the ability to store that amount of food. So we are just the centralized hub of making that happen.
Okay, and then 600 cat, is that, is that cats that are strays? Are there that many stray cats in Huntington? Is that, is that problem getting better or worse because of the PAL program?
So the 600 cats for the year is city and county. So of that, about 600 cats, it's 270 of them come from city limits. We are seeing a slow decrease in city residents signing up for that. And we are seeing a gradual decrease in calls specifically for animal control related to cat incidents. So it is going down. But as discussed when this program was implemented, I would expect it to take a full three to five years to see a full investment, return on investment here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Great questions, any other questions?
Katie, I have a few. So one of the items noted here is you mentioned you're not hiring any additional staff and not seeing an increase in pay rate in 2025, but there is an overall increase in payroll expenditures, about 19%, I think. Is that related to the benefits program you were talking about?
It is, yes. And, and the two-hour minimum compensation. So this would be if we are at standard full-time employees and we're not factoring in overtime. So when we factor in some of that overtime, that's when we see that increase of payroll expenses.
And then on your contracts, I know you have a contract with the city of Huntington, as well as with the Huntington County. The other incorporated towns, any coverage for them is covered under the county contract? Or do they have their own?
That is my understanding, that they will be included in the county contract next year as well, yes.
And last question I've got is, are you, are you fully staffed? What are your staffing needs right now?
We are making an offer for an office coordinator this week. We just hired a program manager and community engagement manager. So a little bit different direction than what we have gone historically. But as you can see, we're, we're hoping next year, and we're budgeting next year, to have a bit more in that fundraising grant space. And so that will be that person's focus. So we are hoping that that will round us out as being fully staffed for the year. But again, our budget numbers is if we maintain full staffing all year, which we typically don't maintain full staffing all year. So that, that number can fluctuate a little bit.
And the community engagement manager does what? Because that's a really cool name.
So our community engagement.
Are they making people aware of that you exist and how to get to you and that type of thing?
So they are going to oversee all of the programs in which we offer. So the PAL program, volunteer program, foster program, the food distribution program. We also offer in-home dog training now for free as well. We have a certified canine behaviorist on staff. He goes to people's home and does in-home training to keep those dogs in their homes. So she will oversee those programs. But then she's also going to be responsible for donor acquisition, fundraisings, and grants.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to thank you for all that you're doing. Know that we're less volunteer, so you must have a love for animals to do all of this.
It's a great cause. It's a worthy cause.
And, and yeah, I, it seems like large numbers, but there's no way we could replicate that. The amount of service you're providing us for the money we're paying, I think we're getting a very good deal. So thank you very much.
Anything else?
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Okay, so then moving on to the, so communication, HR budgets actually combined. And I was going to talk about the HR part of it, but it's, I mean, I don't know if you want Kevin to come up and talk about it as well, but I basically kind of talked about it already. But the increase would be the salary line item, as well as that computer software increase that he is getting, as well as the 451, the furniture and fixtures, which would be for when we remodel, move into offices.
So are we doing more things in-house because we're saving five grand on the contracted services? Is that how that, that's, the contracted services line, it's down?
It's in Kevin's portion.
Yeah, so that's in Kevin's portion. I'll have him come up and talk about that piece of it.
Sorry, Kevin.
So, yeah, I didn't want to have him have to repeat the computer software stuff, so. But did you have any questions anymore on that? So I just want to really quickly just give you guys, I promised I'd give you kind of an update on how like employee retention and everything is going. And so overall, the 100 series, it's actually, if you guys do the math, it's going up about $320,000. That includes that 3% raise, as well as the per FICA Medicare. I do want to point out to you that the health insurance line item in everybody's budget, we are anticipating yet another year of no increase in our health insurance cost. And I feel like a broken record. I get to stand up here and tell our health insurance program, our health and wellness program that we have. Over the last 10 years, we've averaged anywhere from 80 to 85 employees participating. I'm happily here to say that on Friday for our health fair, we have over 100 employees that are participating. We have about 139 employees, full-time employees. So, you know, that's 90% of our staff that's participating in our know-year numbers, and it reflects in our health insurance claims that we see every year. So kudos to all of them. So as far as employment for, through the end of August of this year, so I'm going to go through this because it seems a little, it could seem a little misleading. But, so we've had five people resign. We've not had anybody retire, nor have we had anybody get terminated. And we hired 13 summer part-time slash seasonal employees. And the majority of those part-time seasonal employees were with the Parks program, the Sparks program, very popular within our community, and the kids love it. And so there's anywhere from eight to 10 people that we bring on board specifically for that program. And it's a six-week program. We also bring on some part-time helpers, college kids in the Parks Department to help with mowing, cleaning bathrooms, graffiti, do everything to help out the full-time staff in the Parks Department. And they're here anywhere from eight to 10 weeks. And then we also did bring on an intern at the Parks Department. She implemented some new programs for teens and stuff for, through the summer, as well as we did bring on an intern to help out in the engineering department as well this last summer. So currently, we have three openings. We have one opening in our city services department that just came open, a mechanic position. And then we also have two openings in our police department. We're just getting ready to start the recruiting process for the mechanic position. And we are in the recruiting process for the police department. We've done our interviews. We had about 60 people apply. By the time we get down to interviews, we interviewed 11 people. We whittled that down to five. And so we have those five people that are going through background checks at this time. Otherwise, all of our departments are fully staffed. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Is your laryngitis going away?
I know, right? The more I'm talking, the more you can hear me. This is like the best I've talked in three weeks, like true. So I won't be able to talk at all tomorrow, but. You guys have any questions for me? Okay, thank you very much.
Evening, everybody. So like Annette said, the HR and communications budget are combined. She already went over most everything. I'll just add in the 300 series, the computer software line. That's adding back in the Adobe Creative Suite that I used, edit videos, typography, all of that. That had been paid out of the Board of Works budget previously. Now we're adding them back into mine. And then about a month ago, IT also. So that's the rest of the increase. Yeah, the 400s, Annette mentioned the increase. That's just when we moved into our new offices after the remodel. I can show you the desk that I'm currently using. Yeah, and otherwise, Todd, you had a question about the contracted services line?
Yeah, there's a decrease of five grand. So is that because you're able to do more in-house than you had to do before?
Um, to a point. With the Adobe Creative Suite software, I can do a lot of the video editing that at times we've hired out just to have like a professional do. Really well-presented, nicely put-together videos. Sometimes those have been hired out. I can do more of those now. At the same time, it's more a matter of the $10,000 versus 15. I'm just kind of aligning that with what's been actually spent the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Kristy.
All right, the clerk's budget. The increase in the ones is the raise. And then the recording fees is $100 more. We, every time you record something at the recorder's office at the county, it's $25. And every time you release it, it's $25. And so when we put liens on, it just seems like that cost, we had been doing more of those. So that's why we increased it a little bit, just to make sure we had that covered. But otherwise, we held the line on everything.
Questions for Kristy? Next up, Superintendent Yoder with Parks Department.
Hi. So in my 100s, you'll notice the part-time seasonal help is up. We want to hire somebody to help take care of some of our flower beds exclusively. We, we struggle at Memorial Park with the Watonian Gardens. You know, just our flower beds in general. So we'd like to hire somebody to specifically focus on flower beds throughout the. You'll also notice the summer program help. As Annette kind of alluded to, our Spark program is just growing. So we'd like to go back up to three parks instead of two, which requires more directors. So that's why you see an increase there.
The third park? You got Hires, Memorial, and what's the third one?
Uh, no, we have Memorial, Drover, and it'll be more than likely Slack Park. We're kind of evaluating that now. Other than that, the only other increase is in motor equipment. And that's just so we can purchase another new mower.
How much are you mowing now and how much is contracted out? Because it's been back and forth. You used to do it all for a while, and then it came back, and so.
Yeah, so if you look at the, well, over the last four years, we've cut off, what, 30, 32,000? I mean, just, we've taken back that much mowing. We've picked up doing Evergreen ourselves. Several of the small parks, Drover, Slack, Hires. So we just kind of continue to, to work that way. But, you know, also be mindful of the parks that do take more time. Memorial, Yeoman, you know, so Elmwood.
So you have the equipment for the smaller ones, so that makes sense to do it that way compared to, but the contractors come in and do the big ones with the bigger mowers? Okay, thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Next up is Director Kepler, Community Development and Redevelopment.
Good evening. Overall, our budget, including the 1,000 series, is a, reflects about a 1.6% increase. I think that's pretty good. If you net out that 1,000 series, or 100 series, I'm sorry. It's a 1.4% increase, or $282. Just going down through, decreased office supplies by 100, increased copier credit card by $50. Anytime anybody pays with a credit card, we pay that, we have to eat that processing fee essentially. And more and more folks like plastic. It is the way of the future. Subs dues and book repairs down 100. Vehicles workers comp increase, obviously, and then computer down 100. Going back up to that 100 series, the largest cut would be in part-time. We cut that in half. We've not taken advantage of that primarily because, one, our office space is limited. If you've been in there, there's no physical space to stub another body. Number two, the, the type of person that we would really need would be somebody to come in and just cover when we have somebody who's out sick or something. And that's, you know, that kind of test, that's hard to find. Somebody to, wants to just sit around and wait and be on-call sort of thing. So as, after the remodel, perhaps we'll look at what that position looks like and look at staffing needs and things like that. But I'll wait for that to be the time to come back and talk to you. But any questions for me on the budget? Thank you.
Next up, Chief Oxel, Police.
Good evening. I appreciate you saving the best for last.
That's why Kristy wraps this up.
After me, that's right. Mayor knew where I was going with that. Just to give you a quick update, we added, as you will see, a line item in the 200 series, which is our canine program. As you guys know, we added two dogs to the Huntington Police Department this year. We had tremendous success in fundraising. Very blessed by the community, we raised a little over 50,000. We raised a little over $50,000. We have two dogs now. One is a single-purpose dog that's in the school system. Second one is a dual-purpose dog that will be a patrol dog. That dog, the patrol dog, was just delivered last week from the Czech Republic. We had a little bit of delay in getting him here, travel time due to weather. Certain policy out there that the dogs can't travel unless the temperature's under a certain degree. So that was significantly delayed than more than what we had thought, we initially thought that we'd be training with that dog in August and unfortunately here it is September and he just started training this week. But that dog looks very, very promising. We're excited for him. The school dog, I don't know if I shared this update with you guys, but we actually interviewed six different dogs, I think it was, and had a lot of washouts unfortunately. Believe it or not, that dog is more difficult to find than a dual-purpose dog because we want the temperament to be right around the children in the school system. So we actually were able to connect with Huntington North High School football coach, Mike Eschbach, who owns and runs a very, very successful show dog kennel that specifically breeds Golden Retrievers and English Dream Golden Retrievers up in Waterloo. We have an exceptional puppy that we've been training. The downside to that is, is that it's going to take a little bit longer to get him up and running, but I think the upside is that you alleviate any concerns of bad habits the dog might have learned prior to us acquiring him. Huge success in our school system right now and he goes to school with a resource officer, spends a limited time actually out-functioning and training and in the classroom and whatnot. I can tell you that my wife's classroom was the big. Classroom, she has a very, very difficult first grader and that dog changed that boy's mindset in a hurry that day and so that was phenomenal. Later, obviously, as we trained, he utilized his nose a lot more than just his presence in order to find the drug. We're excited for that. I only share that with you because you'll see that we added a line item to the tune of $3,000. Likely double that next year. The research that I've done with other departments and their Canines, they typically budget about $3,000 per dog, per year, just for bet costs and maintenance and those kinds of things. Any equipment that might get worn or overly used or need replaced. So we still have a significant balance in our donation fund and we certainly intend to utilize that as well, but I just wanted to make you guys know where we're at and that's where we're going with it. Also in the 200 series, we had some jockeying back and forth of some funds. You know, traditionally when I took over this position, our tire line item was always $7,000. Last year, the mayor and I dropped it to five because I had a pretty good surplus and that was probably a knee-jerk reaction, too much. Tried to find a happy median this year and I went back to 6,000 on that one. The Dare Budget, you guys will see, instituted that program again, another hugely successful support project, supported project by our community and so we raised quite a bit of donated funds. Initially, the mayor and I established that budget at a guess at about $5,000 and pulled that back the second year because of the surplus that we had in donations, but now those have been exhausted, so we realized that we need to increase that a little bit. That's the difference there. And the last thing in the 200s that I wanted to touch on unfortunately is motor supplies. You'll see I got a little bit of an increase there. We've had, I'll be honest with you, that line item, and I'm hoping I don't have to come back to you and ask for an additional appropriation, but that line item is unfortunately way in the red this year for me. We think that we can balance our budget come the end of the year with Kristi's assistance, but I hate to get up here and knock a certain brand of car because I don't know if you're a Ford guy, Chevy guy, but we've had a significant problem with Fords. The mayor is aware of that and who would have thought that it costs over $4,000 to replace the water pump? Water pump. Placed four of them. So they have to pull the entire front of the engine off, including the timing covers and if they're in there on at least two of those four, we've also replaced the timing chain tensioner because while you're in there, you might as well do it if it needs it, which obviously ups the cost even more. Bad luck, I guess. One Ford Taurus that's sitting out here in my parking lot right now that has a bad water pump in it and I hope to trade it too. Trade that one and honestly, we get about $1,000 to $1,500 in trading one of those That's where we're at with that. Jumping ahead to the.
Chief, if you could also elaborate a little bit that what we've learned, actually I'll elaborate for you instead of leading the witness. So what we've learned in the process of that is that these design decision that Ford has made on these water pumps, they all tend to go at very similar mileage on each of them. So it has not yet been recalled, but we do continue to monitor and encourage that so in hopes that we can recoup some of those expenses down.
If you look, there's a class action lawsuit out there right now, trying to encourage Ford to make that recall and obviously we'd be, if that happens, we'd look into the reimbursement side of it, but we obviously keep very detailed records and bill all the replacements on the, yeah, about 70,000 miles.
The Taurus or the Explorer?
Both. It's this 3.7-liter V6 motor. It's not the turbocharged engine. Knock on wood, the Durangos, the V6 Durangos, you guys have heard and you know that's what we've been purchasing as of recent. They've been a very good vehicle for us. Hope that continues to hold and I didn't just jinx myself, but we have not, we have not seen the issues that the state police have had because they're running the V8s. Have that oil cooler, water issue, water with the oil. We have not experienced any of that. Our Sheriff's Department is unfortunately still victim to that as well. The only other issue that I really wanted to touch on in the 300 series was the camera system line item. As you know, we moved to Axon Body Cameras, in-car cameras, and also flock cameras that have been a huge blessing to our department and our city as a whole. Because of the legislature's movement to get rid of public safety lit, our Body Cam contract has traditionally came from that payment, so what we're trying to do is feather that payment in. So the increase that you see there is about a third of our Body Cam contract that we're trying to feather into the general fund. The only other change there is in the 442 line item, the other equipment where we actually decreased that line item by $36,500. Reason for that is simply because if you recall, last year was our eight-year mark to replace our weapon system. I went to a single gun system before we had two different guns issued to certain administration detectives, certain officers. Now went to one weapon as an M.O.S. Ready, has a red dot on it. I'm telling you, for an old guy like me that has to carry around these set of eyeballs, this thing is a game changer. We really appreciate your guys' support on that and blessing. Do in our time cycle to replace those firearms. Mayor come out and had a little fun with us. He shot very well for an inexperienced guy with his weapon.
So easy, the American qualify.
That's right. They are really nice, the precision, accuracy, and confidence that it gives a guy who's eyes are starting to go. Appreciate that, but that's the difference there. Any questions for me? Thank you, Chief.
Kristi, bring us home.
Okay, so the bottom half of your total page, I'm going to go through that rather quickly, just kind of explaining, starting with fire pension. The increase there is the attorney and I explained that Charlie had asked us what that was about and I checked with Pat Shear because he's the Pension Secretary for Police and he was explaining to me that the increases in case an active officer gets injured in the line of duty or off-duty, and then they would, if they would qualify for, or they would be pensioned out on disability pension and say perf says, well, you only are, you only get 50%. And so then an attorney could fight for more percentage. And this has happened in a smaller community in Indiana where there was an accident and the Pension Secretary or the Pension Fund needed to pay for that attorney. So that's why he said that a lot of the Pension Secretaries around the state are adding that attorney line into their budget in case they would need it. More than likely, we won't, but it's just earmarked there for that. The Pension Police and Fire is both reimbursed yearly for the retired police and fire and the dependents. So that income that we receive from the state to pay out those pensioners, I do a report at the end of the year, or it's due by January, to, so we'll reimburse the previous year's dollars. And so we do have money in the fund from before, you know, that's carried over every year, to sustain us while the new year money is being spent. So that money would probably come from that surplus or that cash balance actually because that part would not be reimbursed. So the expenses in the threes and the twos is not reimbursed, only the ones is reimbursed by the state. So I don't know if that makes sense.
So the, like the retired firemen, is there more people retired or we got reimbursed?
No.
Oh, I want to know again.
Okay, so.
Thank you for your memory.
As the pensioners pass away, that goes down and then the dependents, if they have a dependent survivor, survivor benefit, then they, that increases.
Okay.
So eventually, and these are the 77 plan, so these are the ones that the city pays for the people that retired quite a while ago. And so as those people are passing away and if they have a dependent, then that person is getting paid. So that's why the shift in the $2 amounts.
Do you remember that answer?
That we're getting reimbursed.
There's three people out there that didn't know that.
The next one is public safety lit. We have the active police and fire, their pension, their perf dollar amount is still being budgeted in public safety lit. And then the lease rental for the police and the fire building, the payment that is combined now. So that's why it went up from 225 to 344. So that's all we're budgeting in public safety lit, knowing that that is going to go away or be changed up. The next budget would be CEDIT and this balance is what I have, that I've reported as of July 31st because I have to do a cutoff at some point. This is also a five-year budget because we have to do a plan, that's a five-year plan that we have to turn into the county in order to get the CEDIT money. But this is also going away. So we're just, instead of changing it to a one-year plan, we're just left it as it is and then just, this is like the balance of the last plan that was approved by you Rainy Day, Rainy Day Fund is just an amount that we have, which the fund balance is, I Rainy Day is 728,000, but we just appropriate 200,000 at budget time so that we could spend, if we needed to spend something, we could. But more than likely, we would bring it back to council anyway so that you would know what we're spending out of the Rainy Day Fund. And anything over 200,000, we would have to bring back for an additional appropriation as well. CCD is cumulative capital development and we mostly use that fund for roads. And so between Adam and Tim, they kind of earmark some of this money, but this is the one where we reestablish the fund so that a percentage would always be a 0.25% rate to 0.50 is now. But we always budget 150,000 just in case we need to spend that, but anything else, we would bring it back to council as well. As CCI, which is cum cap improvement, we used to use that for sidewalks. We still use those for, those two funds for improvements. And that's just like a dollar amount that we put in there to appropriate, but we can only spend if we have the cash. And that way, we don't have to keep spending the legal fee to advertise for the additional appropriation and bring it back. So we just try to budget a little bit of money in there in the appropriation. Same with local road and street, 150,000. We just seem to be, just, we just carry those forward. And if we spend more than that, we need to come back to council with an additional. And then we have the GEO bonds. Now we have three. The debt services and those are just the annual payments that we have for those three debt services, GEO bonds. And stormwater bond, same, that's just our debt service. And then we have the TIF budget. Bryn works this TIF budget out with what the RDC has planned for the year and then, yeah, he just takes like how much cash he has and then splits it up into the projects that the RDC has. So we turn in that TIF budget. In the middle of the page there on TIF is Synergy TIF and that is the debt service payment for the Synergy Metronet that they borrowed. And then the River Fork is the new, those are some new expenses that we have for River Fork West. And so that will be the lease payment for the fire station and building and structure or infrastructures, projects. And if you have any questions before we have our budget hearing at the end of the month, you'll have to get with me. But that is the budget presentation for tonight.
I have a question. Where's the Water Department in here? Did I miss it?
Not part of this budget appropriation process.
About the Water Department employees?
They're paid out of the rates that are set by City Council.
So it's not part of the general?
Correct. Yep, this is all property tax and income tax.
Okay.
So it's a separate set of books, separate budget, no mixing of the two.
Gentleman sitting back there didn't get to do anything, so I did, wanted to make sure he had his shot.
Yep, Nate's here for moral support for the others. Good team atmosphere and senior leadership. Good question and distinction though.
In the TIF, that top basically half is our general TIF. We have different TIF districts, right? So that, that's the largest of our TIF district and we separated out the River Fork. And they're unique, they're, oh, here comes the answer man.
Well, you've asked, so here I am. We have three different allocation areas, so three different TIF district fund. The 2008 consolidated, which has about five years left on its lifespan. The River Fork West TIF, which we created that features basically the revenues from the industrial park and then we share them across or our dispersment area for those, for lack of a better term, is the both River Fork East and River Fork West. And then the Synergy TIF, which is a personal property TIF that flows in and out to service that debt that expanded fiber optics to the areas surrounding the city.
So the larger TIF is dwindling?
No, so it's not dwindling. We're going to have a lot of cash outflows this year, quite honestly. We're going to have a million dollars at HK Porter that's going to go out. We're doing the Water Main Loop to River Fork West. Those numbers came in at 1.8 million dollars. So by the time you net that out from the appreciation and the increase of the property tax revenue that you've got, that's where you're at. The Redevelopment Commission has typically taken a pay-as-you-go approach for the most part. We have our 2015 bonds. We had a Kroger bond that was from Forever. We have our 2015 bonds, we had a Kroger bond that was from forever ago, um, but we're incrementally saving, um, for large projects. Uh, the next Etna Avenue project, if you will, is Adam's project on West Park Drive, and I call that the next Etna Avenue because that's really what it's going to be, street, sidewalks, curb, gutter, storm drainage, those sorts of things. And so as opposed to going out and increasing the city's debt and bonding for that project, the redevelopment commission has decided to squirrel away about $420,000 a year, save that as cash on hand until we get time for that project. That's an LPA project with Indot. When we go to, um, do that project on day one, go out to bid, whatever that deadline is, we got to write a check for that, so we need to have that money in hand, so, um, that's the approach we're doing. So you'll see a lot of cash outflows if we're doing projects, uh, especially capital-intensive ones, and in other years, they'll be kind of building years where we'll be doing other stuff and preparatory, uh, for that and kind of socking money away. Um, it saves us on interest payments, especially in, you know, 5% interest or wherever it is now.
It's all, it's all on Andrew.
Preferred municipal rates, you know?
Okay, no, that's answered a lot, thank you.
Okay, yep. You guys could have answered that.
All right, as we wrap up, uh, budget presentation for the evening, if there's not, uh, further questions or discussion by council members regarding it, uh, just again a reminder of the budget schedule. Uh, the next council meeting on September 30th is when you will have, uh, public hearing as well as the first reading of the ordinances associated with the budget process, and then second and final reading of those same ordinances on October 14th. If there are any modifications or changes, council members should be aware and bring those, preferably communicate that ahead of time so they can be aware of it, but it should happen at the next meeting then. But in the meantime, if you have any follow-up questions, uh, after you've slipped on the information, feel free to reach out. We're glad to provide additional information.
I would just like to thank all the, uh, department heads. I think they've done a phenomenal job with this budget, you know, it's just, um, I don't know how they could have cut any more out of it, you know, it's great, it's just, I know they went to a lot of hard work and, it's just, just thank you.
And as was alluded to, the process we go through for this is we look back, uh, we do a three-year look back on actual expenditures to create a baseline average, and then overlay that with the five-year rolling capital plan, and that's how we pull together the budget that we bring to council. Year one of that five years being the next immediate year, that's the one we have the best in focus. Two is a little vaguer, and years three through five are, are distant aspirations, so.
Okay. Moving along on the agenda, Christie, monthly budget reports and financials.
Yes, um, end of August, then we ended the general fund with $10,200,000. The MVH was 1.2 in MVH, and MVH restricted 762,000, these are the cash balances, and Park had 153,000, um, landfill had 76,000, and airport 181,000. Like I said, Riverboat had, um, 1.2, and Rainy Day had 728,000. Those are things that we keep, um, on hand for our cash flow, and, uh, public safety lit 829,000. So those are things that we need for those payments that are coming up. And, yeah, the fund balances look good for this time of year, and I think, like you said, the department heads are doing a good job in watching the spending as well, and just being mindful of the expenses. You have any questions?
Any questions for Christie on the financials for August? Not hearing any, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second? Motion and second, all in favor indicate by saying hi. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.